Alrighty, good afternoon Commissioners and over to you Chair Harrington.
Well, thank you there Clerk Moss and welcome everyone to our Tuesday, September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session. This is Chair Catherine Harrington. I'm joined by Vice Chair Commissioner Nefes Sifai, Commissioners Pam Treese and Commissioner Jerry Willey. And we're hoping Commissioner Rogers will join us at some point. First item, we get to meet Danielle Farr in person and look who's back. Hello Marnie Kyle. Or do I need to start over and go back to Marnie Cool?
I don't like that too.
How long did you think that I met?
That was a long, that was five years ago or so.
That's so funny, I forgot. Wait a minute, I wasn't here five years ago.
You didn't know I was cool?
I know, I meant no disrespect.
I know.
Yeah.
Kyle.
That's fine.
I don't know how the chair got Kyle to cool, but we'll discuss it off.
It's I K U.
As she is.
A lot of people do that.
Oh yeah?
And I'm never offended by being called cool.
Well, we're glad you're back.
Thank you.
So, without further ado, turning it over to you.
Great. Good afternoon Chair Harrington and Board. For the record, I am Marnie Kyle. I'm one of the ACAs. And I just want to say I'm really pleased to be back in the office and have the opportunity to be here with you today. And have the opportunity to introduce Danielle and provide an update on the deflection program. It feels really good and I want to say thank you to my ACA colleagues and Tanya. And to this board, I felt completely and totally supported and able to heal and be here today. So, I really appreciate that. So, as you remember, when we began planning and sharing deflection plans with this board, one of the goals that we always cited was we want to have the best deflection program in Oregon. And so, I'm happy to report to you today, we are well on our way as leaders in the state of Oregon. I'm thrilled to introduce Danielle Farr as our new deflection senior program coordinator. The entire planning team felt that Danielle was the perfect fit to lead this work. She will share a little bit more about herself in just a couple of minutes. Today's update is really specific to the deflection program, which as a reminder began September first. Really for us, it was September third, just about two weeks ago today. So, two weeks ago today. Although today we're really reflect, are really focused on deflection, I also wanted to remind the board that House Bill four zero zero two provides four pathways to treatment for people with criminal justice charges that are related to substance use disorder. You'll hear today a lot about deflection. But in addition to deflection, the Oregon Drug Prevention Plan has three other pathways to treatment. And you'll learn why this reminder is important as Danielle shares some of our data. But there's also pre-court diversion, which is the deflection program that we're talking about today. So, the other three pathways are court diversion, or otherwise known as conditional discharge. There's court required formal supervision. And then there's revocation of probation with early release to treatment. So, three other pathways in addition to deflection, which we're talking about today. Finally, you've heard us talk a lot about the potential of not having enough funding to operate the Gold Star program that we would like to operate. Deflection program and G and our GR team is already thinking about the legislative agenda and how to address that and how to provide them the data that they need to make different decisions about how we're funded in Washington County. But with the other, the thing that I want to say is also because of those three other pathways, those are really unfunded mandates. We are not receiving funding to help people through those other three pathways. And you'll hear today that departments are taking that work on. Because we're, our ultimate goal is to help people get into treatment. And so, you know, we, we already have Community Corrections who's working on some of the, the revocation and probation with the early release. Court, court required supervision, you know, that's already a program. But this is all being, the, the, the load is, is heavier now because of this deflection program. And you'll hear that really, we've done such a great job working with our local law enforcement that we have, we thought we would have trickles and we're not seeing trickles. We're seeing big numbers come through. So, with that, I'm really excited to turn it over to Danielle, who's going to do the bulk of this presentation.
Thank you, Marnie. Chair Harrington and Board Commissioners, I'm really excited to be here today. And I am also more than a little bit nervous, so forgive any stumbles or missteps with the clicker. I think these have always been the bane of somebody's existence at every presentation. In addition to being nervous about this, I wanted to just share with you a bit of how I came to be here in this work and in this role. So, my journey in this field has been about fifteen years now in the making, not including my education. I've been working in the substance use disorder field for those fifteen years at various levels. In addition to that, I have had the pleasure of working at the county for the last five years. So, I have a bit of familiarity and also a commitment to this, this workforce as, as well as this community. So, this role in particular is a passion of mine, this marriage of multiple partnerships in corrections, law enforcement and behavioral health. I feel like it, it fills a small, but maybe challenging need and needs a lot of focus and dedication in order to be supported correctly because it's a careful but important balance. I also wanted to take a moment, if I could, to introduce another member of my team who's here today. And that's Will Stabler of the DA's office. Joe Nofsinger is also part of that triad that we meet daily. He's not present because he's in an important training, but I wanted to make sure that his voice was represented here too.
What was that other name?
Lieutenant Joe Nofsinger.
Thank you.
Just a quick overview of what we're going to be looking at today. Starting with just an overview of our program, which I know will be a reminder. Your board has seen these slides before in brief, but I wanted to make sure that they are a reminder for those just joining us today. So, this is the slide that you've seen often. The brief overview recaps the core premise of deflection. We're offering participants the opportunity to avoid the criminal justice process by deflecting into a recovery support within our community providers. And the last time you saw this slide, it was a plan. But as of September first, we're seeing this plan in action. So, this is a representative of our program in action. These numbers are the numbers as of the tenth, which was approximately, which was one week ago. Since that time, we've had additional referrals, numeral, numerous additional referrals. Seven more have been deemed eligible. And we have another two that have opted into our program. So, we're seeing engagement, we're seeing eligibility. And needless to say, this is not the trickle that we had previously anticipated. In the beginning, Marnie had spoken a bit of those alternative pathways for support. And this is captured also in this slide as we're seeing opportunities for engagement and recovery support at every stage, at citation. They're seeing contacts at eligibility and intake. And as people become more active, we're seeing more and more engagement with those recovery supports. As we have been very excited for the substantial engagement in this program, we're also excited about the fact that the CJC has offered us a bit more funding. So, this is good news, not always expected in a program rollout, but we happily accepted that. And we'll, heard the CJC suggestions as well as best practices and Washington County's commitment to those best practices, we placed that funding in peer support contracts. And I have already been introduced, I'm at the top there. But as we've been excited about, oh, I've already introduced to you some of the members of our passionate team that have been dedicated to ensuring the rollout of this work. And it's gone incredibly smoothly considering. In this first month that I've been in this role, I have been overwhelmed with the skill and the care of the team that I've been able to be on. We've had opportunities to see the design of the team, which could be considered tricky, work really well for our participants. One of our first signed participants, or second in fact, was initially deemed ineligible, but through that feedback model that we designed, we were able to swiftly rule him in and bring him into our program. And not only was he grateful, but we think he's going to be a great fit for our program. And with the growing needs ahead of us, there are two additional roles that we're going to be hiring for. And we're still in the process. One is posted now and one will be posted in the future. Speaking of our incredible partnerships, one amazing example that I wanted to put forward to the board or to your board was that in the one Washington County spirit, we had a massive success in that first week in creating a simple but effective intake form. So, we had assistance from multiple divisions and multiple departments. And we're able to reduce thirty-six pages of CJC requested data points into what is effectively a seven-minute, very friendly intake that's remote. And you can see on that slide is an image of what that looks like in the field. It's little radio buttons that make it real swift, really non-invasive way to take data. But the, the backend of that works really great. In addition to those internal partnerships that are central to our program, we would not be able to set this up without our community partners. We've had nearly thirty partner agreements set out. One of those partners that has been really integral to our development has been the Life Works Northwest representatives who've helped be involved in the development of the processes themselves. And a special note to the hard work from the Sheriff's Office. They help train our police departments so that they feel supported to connect with those individuals. This is a new body of work for them and they've been able to really engage, as we can see by those numbers. And they've been able to hand out these bilingual notice cards. And I brought enough, if you'd like to share some around, brought the stack from my desk. We've also seen some great partnerships growing between those police departments and our peer recovery supports. So, having our officers give those citations and help the individual contact peer supports in that moment has really been tremendous. And I'm receiving feedback all the way around from that. Additionally, our community remains interested in deflection. They want to know a lot about it. And they've been very welcoming in each of our presentations. I wanted to specifically thank Chair Harrington for bringing our attention, or bringing attention to the deflection program at the Chair Mayor's meeting. Additionally, thanking County Administrator Angie for updating the city managers group. Our community and stakeholder education, it continues to remain one of our continued priorities. And you will see in our timeline here where we started on the first. And we've welcomed many participants into our program since then. And we're looking to see our first graduations in March, which will be exciting. Also, in our timeline, we would love to come back quarterly, starting in January with our next update. And I am happy to hear about what questions your board might.
So, Chair Harrington, I, I want to just make sure we're clear. What we're suggesting is, is not having this monthly update, but moving it quarterly. So, you'll see some discussion points in the next slide.
Great, good list of questions. My colleagues, usually the district commissioners go first. Any questions or comments?
Yeah. So, we received a million five. Why do we need to fund the program?
That's a big question. I think we're, we're working on collecting that data. Because we're, you know, even in the first two weeks, we're realizing like needing more administrative support because it's a tremendous amount of data entry because it's two systems, criminal justice, behavioral health system. We're, we're learning about the needs of our peer organizations and what it takes to build really the gold standard of having somebody like boots on the ground when a citation is issued to be there right away. So, we're, we're building that case and working with GR to make sure that we can get that information to the legislators.
Okay, so we'll have that number.
Someday.
So, we can touch on it in advance of the session, right?
Yep. Oh, yes.
Can, can we verify with ACA Ann Ober? I think what we're trying to figure out for the board, understanding budget pressures. So, I'm assuming, and this is why I need to get verification, that the one point five million dollars will get us so far.
Right.
We want to be able to, based upon the prior information we've received, we want to be able to quantify and qualify what it takes for us to run a successful program that meets the opportunity set. And so, I believe they're going about that. But the difference between the grant dollars received and what it takes to continue to operate this through the end of the fiscal year, we're, we'll have to end up covering through the contingency that we have set aside in our adopted budget. But sometime during the course of the legislative cycle, through the legislature, we want to be able to tell the story of what will be needed for the, out of the biennial budget, the two-year biennial budget to sustain the program for the next biennium. I, I believe that's the way I've heard it described. Am I?
Yes. And I, I think also you can't, like, we've talked about the three other pathways. And it's not as, as a bright, clear line when you're in which pathway. And I think that there's, like, there's already pressure. I don't know if Nate's in, in the audience, but there's already a lot of pressure on community corrections because people sometimes aren't eligible because they're on probation and parole. And I'm probably not using the right words, but then, you know, there's more pressure on that department. They're getting no deflection money. So, you know, we're trying, we're trying to also understand that and look more holistically at the entire bill. So, but yes, we will have a number that we can request before the legislative session begins.
Okay.
And that we'll share that with you.
All right, I'll stay tuned on that. I have one other question. So, I'll go back a couple of, to slide four. There. So, nineteen standalone citations. We only had seven eligible and three were accepted. So, to me, that, that's it's not as successful as I would like to see it, I'll put it that way. Because if the real program is diversion, then we'd like to be more successful than that. So, is the criteria too narrow?
So, a little bit of this would be a process question. Part of what you're seeing is from when they're found eligible, there's a lag between their eligibility determination and then their arraignment date. So, during that time period, they might be eligible, seven, but haven't connected with us yet. There's still six days and we're looking at a ten-day window. Six of those days are just waiting on arraignment.
So, the other twelve that didn't make the eligible had some of that criteria on it that wants and warrants, arrests, whatever. So, that was, they just didn't meet the criteria plane and.
Correct. And Will is here and could talk more on that eligibility criteria, if you wanted that granular data.
No, not really. Not right now.
Determined by the bill?
Well, that's what I'm understanding. Somebody put together the criteria and maybe it's just a little bit too restrictive.
Some of it is, is required by the bill, but we, we came out first. Will or somebody from the DA can pop in too, but.
Will, I think we need you up at the table.
We came up with criteria, not no.
One on wheels right there.
So, our criteria started out probably more restrictive, understanding that as we learned in the first several weeks, we may be able to extend the criteria. So, right now, it's PCSU only. They can't have another charge. Now that Will's here, I'll let him speak more eloquently to this.
Sure. So, the, the overwhelming exclusionary criteria for the twelve folks that weren't eligible was having pending criminal cases. And so, these were folks that already have an open criminal case, mostly within Washington County. And then while that case is pending, whether they were on warrant status or their, their case was at some other phase in the criminal justice system, they were contacted by police and found, you know, drugs in their possession. And so, for them, even if they were, if they were in, or if they were opted into the deflection program, it wouldn't be a true deflection because they're already involved in the criminal justice system by virtue of their pending case. And that's been the, the overwhelming majority of exclusionary or folks who are excluded by our criteria. It's for that. To a much lesser extent, it's folks who are already on supervision for some form, whether it's a formal probation or post-prison supervision. I think that's only been, I think, three total. And these numbers have effectively doubled, I think, since, since September tenth. And then lastly, there's only been, I believe, one or two individuals excluded because of their, a criminal conviction in their past. And so, I, I know that our, I, I only started here back at the county on July fifteenth. And so, the criteria was created before I came back. But I know that the criteria was set up to start this program small, to get it up and running and get it going successfully with a small number of folks with the intent that we can expand. And I see us expanding in the direction of allowing some other folks who do have pending criminal cases to potentially resolve those, you know, with a dismissal perhaps, or, or some other creative way that we can achieve the goals of deflection for those individuals.
Yeah.
Don't they have the opportunity to opt, they have to opt in?
To deflection, correct.
So, so there may be people who aren't ready to move toward making that change in their life.
Yes.
I think that that's an important thing to remember.
Yeah. And all these folks still get to go to conditional discharge as well. So, that's a brand new program that never existed before that was created by House Bill four thousand two. So, they do have another shot at, at treatment and a, hopefully dismissal of the case if they're able to, to comply with the, the conditions of that program. So, they're not left, you know, out to dry, so to speak.
And I think it, it should be noted that I know that this was based off the recommendations from the LEED model, which is a best practice. And the recommendations from them over and over and over again is that we know you have a passion to serve. We know you want your gates open as much as possible, but start small. And that really operates with the, with the lens of, I'm not going to practice on vulnerable people, right? We're not going to work out the kinks on these individuals. Instead, we want to get it right, even if it's a bit small at start. But we've designed this program and this partnership to be able to open. We have no intention of closing those doors. So, that's the, that's the premise or the values that we're working towards and through there, is to start small and do it right.
And, and one final reminder is we had less than six months to plan this from, you know, nuts to bolts. Something that's never been done in the state before. LEED was a model, but it's not the same as deflections.
It is not.
I think it was wise, in my opinion, to start small and get good at what we're doing.
Yeah, I would agree. Go ahead.
Ms. Treese?
I did have another question. It was about the funding. We received an email last week regarding the funding formula for one ten. So, I assume that the, the balance and the corrections that are there also will be part of the discussion moving forward with the legislators.
So, soccer is.
I see him nodding.
Right on it. And we have discovered, since your email yesterday, we have discovered some pretty stark differences in data between the data that Washington County with our excellent epidemiologists and criminal justice system. And so, we've seen some really stark differences between what OHA is reporting and what we know is happening. And so, soccer is on it and has already reached out to try to figure out how do we get that data corrected because it has pretty, it's pretty impactful to our funding.
And I was just pointing out that there's a difference between how we are managing our data or funding versus what the funding picture looks like.
Welcome to the Washington County team, both of you. Great to meet you and look forward to this partnership. Marnie, I appreciate you clarifying the LEED and, and the deflection and the difference. I do agree with you that LEED is a bit more proactive and, and this is the reaction, as you said, in our. But you're right also because we, the nuts and bolts are being created as we fly this plane. I, I do have a question. I'll, I'll start with the slide that you have. The nineteen citations. Who's citing this? Is this the Sheriff's Office? Is this all the police departments in Washington County or?
The short answer to that is yes.
All the police department, including the sheriff. These are all countywide.
Yes, this is a countywide, in any case where there would be a criminal citation or an encounter if they're choosing to cite someone that they have that. It's not relegated to certain locations or, or certain departments.
And then, I, I know you listed the, the citations, but to deflection, there's also components of arrest. Was there no arrest for those nine days?
No, none of these folks were arrested.
So, there were no, nobody that were arrested? What happened to the seven people that they were cited? So, they just go through this chart that we have for the citations?
Yeah, so all of the, there were some folks who were arrested for the PCSU, but they were arrested with, with other crimes. So, they, they committed an, another crime. Police found drugs on them and then they were, you know, arrested along with the other offenses that the officer had probable cause for. But all of our standalone PCSU cases, those were all citations. We've, we've directed law enforcement not to arrest people just to issue a citation. And we also directed them to expedite the citation to us, to cite them into court seven days out instead of a typical thirty-day citation window. For the folks who are, who are cited and appear, you know, they're ordered to, to show up at the law enforcement center. And then if they enter into deflection, they're, they're not booked or processed or anything like that. They walk out the door and go with Danielle and the treatment folks. So, the, the hope is that there, for the, the folks that are eligible and want to participate in the program, they would, they would never be arrested on their records for this.
And then is it safe to say that the next presentation that, Marnie, you come back here to present to the board, you'll have more information of, of those seven, actually of the nineteen that were cited, how many of them actually followed through this process or how many of them ended up being incarcerated? how many of them actually followed through this process or how many of them ended up being incarcerated, you know, ended up being?
Yeah, the hope is that we're, we're gonna keep collecting data and obviously monitor how these, how these folks do in the program. Um, the only way that, that they could be arrested is if they were to commit another crime. Um, or if they were ultimately, uh, I guess failed out of the program, if the, if the deflection operations team unanimously uh agrees that an individual is not, is no longer compliant with the program. Um, they can be, you know, discharged from the program in order to appear in court. And if they fail to appear at that court appearance, uh, they could be arrested for failing to appear. So that, that would really be the only, I guess, off ramp, so to speak, where somebody could be arrested for this, who's in the deflection program.
I, I would add that there's always going to be a lag between eligible and active participation because it's, it's either we've, we've connected an outreach worker with her, with them and they, you know, say, yes, I want to go into treatment, or it's at that arraignment when we try to catch them, you know, and say, you have this option. So there's always going to be a lag between that, between those two numbers.
Will there any op, will there be any opportunity for this board to sort of view the, I understand the eligibility criteria is what weaves people out to actually qualify for the deflection. And Julia and our team, the communication really helped me understand. I had a strong reaction to some of the eligibility and I thought it was really rigid and could be flexible. And I think there is that opportunity built into the eligibility. And I'm happy to sit back and uh evaluate the process and, and follow that journey to, and then assess as we go along. But I think what would help us as a board make that decision is if you disaggregate the data um and, and help us understand which criteria is a bit too rigid that really makes people not qualify or not be able to participate in this process because ultimately, um, you know, we want to first eventually make this a proactive process where hopefully uh officers will have the opportunity to divert people from the criminal justice and, you know, system to somewhere where they can actually get to treatments. But we're heading there. I'm going to keep hope, be hopeful in that way. But as it's reactive, it's really hard to make that decision that Commissioner Willie is asking, how do we know? You know, how do we follow the individual to help more people qualify? Because this is a countywide and it's one point five million dollar. And we have over six hundred thousand people that live in this county. And the crisis is happening in Washington County, not as it appears in other counties. But so, and I think we want to be helpful to people. So I, I'm, I, I just want not to complicate your job, but a, a, a bit more uh engagement to fully understand what is happening to the people that are uh being cited, arrested, and how as a board um, we can have that policy discussion to say, okay, let's loosen up this one with your subject matter experts or let's make it stronger. And, and then also arm wrestle with the state legislators to say, we need more money because we are actually making a difference to people's, in people's lives. So that's one thing. And then I did have, uh, I'll be quick, Chair. Sorry, one more thing. Just um, didn't mean to get on that soapbox. I do have a money question as well, but in a different angle than the previous commissioners. So in the document, it says that in select area of Washington County and subject to the limitation of deflection funding and resources, the Washington County Deflection Program Peer Support Specialist will be available to come to the scene at the time of the citation to meet with the cited person. Has that been happening?
Yeah, that's a great question. So that's a, a bit of a reference to, because we don't have sufficient funding for that gold standard, we've instead allowed our burn representatives and our burn partners to just opt in to this. And because we have committed passionate burn providers, they're opting, opting into these pilot programs of being available. Um, we have two different partners. One is four D, one is M H E O. Um, they both have slightly different models and that's why you see kind of a nebulous description because we don't want to be too in the weeds. Um, but they have slightly different models on how they can be present at the time of citation. What I think is the beauty of the model that they're using is they're serving people regardless of eligibility. And I think at the end of the day, that really is the beauty of this model. Because maybe they're eligible, maybe they're not, but if they're motivated for services, we want them to accept those services. We want that to be bridged. We want to capture that motivation and embark on recovery. So that's regardless of whether we've done our paperwork or not, everybody's getting that same support. So because it's new and because it's limited to um kind of those specific pilot programs, um, that's where you get some of that dependent upon. Um, if we had all of the funds in the world, we would likely build on that, out on that very swiftly because we're seeing, I'm hearing almost daily from our peer support networks um about the enthusiasm people are having going into treatment and how excited they are that the people that they've seen for, for a year now in their community outreach are ready to go into withdrawal management today and they weren't before. So they had an interaction, citation or not, regardless of that, and they're wanting to go into services. So just that switch in the partnerships of our police departments and our peer supports and our vulnerable populations who are saying, okay, yeah, you know what? Let's, let's try this. Um, I think that's the culture we want to see. Um, and I'm going to find better numbers so that I can capture that a little bit better because it's not going to be on this slide, right? That dramatic change is not going to be on this slide here.
Thank you. I appreciate you all. And one last question, or I had, I'll take the rest off with you, Marnie, and have a briefing with you. But uh yesterday, Beaverton School District sent out how they're distributing a lockson uh middle school and high school, which actually paints this disturbing picture of the reality that exists out there. Um, and I know in the beginning you talked about harm reduction and how that is embedded in our services, but I didn't get that in this first reaction. So I think in the future, if we could actually understand a bit more of the services individuals are getting.
Yeah. And I, I mean, yes, we should, we can connect offline. Um, but as a forty year public health perspective, I think that this really blends harm reduction with accountability, which is what we've needed for years. So with my public health hat on, I, I think this is the blend that we needed because for some people, they need more than harm reduction. They need also to be held accountable. Thank you.
Maybe.
Thank you for your presentation. I hear your passion and appreciate your enthusiasm. Um, this program was, it was first proposed, it's by the legislature, not us, as you know. I, I questioned the money and I still question the money and I appreciate you bringing.
So sitting on like a flat big truck.
I think that's was important.
Well, see, right.
One point five million dollars, and I saw the memo of soccer, I appreciate the memo, is nothing. Relatively, I, I just a tiny little bit. And so my concern is the policy, not your policy, but the fiscal policy of the county. This county is not getting better fiscally. It's, it's trying and this board has done a lot to try to rein in costs. But we're a collection of a lot of programs. This is one program. If this program runs over one point five, and I heard a comment, we may need to go to our, our contingency. Um, I'm concerned about that, as, as just one board member. And the reason I'm concerned is there's a lot of programs that need just a little bit more help. And so I'm hopeful because I won't be here the next time. You're probably here in January to bring this back. I, I'm hopeful that you're able to define what you can do uh and can't do with the money. I'm hopeful that this is an open-ended checkbook that you're going to say, well, gee, we couldn't do it for one point five, but we can for five and some board come up with the money. Because I asked when we, and I raised my hand, I, I voted with the board and, and saying, let's give it a try. We didn't have to do the deflection program. We could have opted out because I felt that it was a program that had some merit in terms of getting some folks some help that they needed. We want to get them out of this criminal system and this help, but not without some support from our state partners. And that's really what the issue in my mind is. So I'm hoping that you'll give us a better understanding what the numbers are. I see three, I hear ten, I hear nine. I, I, I don't know how many, I'm trying to add in my mind as you were calling out the numbers, how many people are really, you were calling a trickle and then you were saying, now we get a whole bunch. Well, twenty or thirty is not a whole bunch to me. I mean, it might be, but to you, but it's not a whole bunch to me. So what is it going to cost the county? What are we going to do at the state? And this board's going to have to really take a look and say, at what point do they say they'll fund everything? Or can they stop at some point? Say we'll fund up to the program? Schools are famous for that. They say, we get so many dollars, that's where the program runs out. So I, again, I appreciate that, your, your enthusiasm. I sound like a Debbie Downer. I'm not trying to be. I'm trying to understand that we have needs, that this board's working very hard to be fair and to fill a whole lot of needs. And an open-ended program with open-ended costs, subjecting us to a lot of risk. And so uh, I'll stop with that.
Commissioner Rogers, I, I think from the beginning, um, we've really, I mean, part of why we have stricter criteria and part of why we're starting slow is we have had a commitment to live within the budget that we're given from the state. Our intention is to ask the state for more funding. Um, we're not, we, we understand the county's budget and there isn't an intention at this point or probably at any time in the near future to come to the county and ask for general fund because this is a, a state program. And um we have fabulous GR um who are going to help us tell the story about how important this program is. But that one point five million is not, it's a drop in the bucket compared to the need. But we will, we will live within our means. That, that might mean some difficult decisions about who gets services, but we have to live within our means.
That was very helpful because what I described earlier is incorrect. What you're saying is between now and the end of fiscal year twenty five, we're going to live within the one point five million dollar budget.
Yes.
Okay.
Just as we do with many, many, many special.
Yeah. Yep. I hear you loud and clear. Um, on your policy questions, these are really useful questions to me. Uh, a piece of this that I don't understand is, I just need you to, I, I would, I'm asking you to follow up just with an email to the board after this with the labels of the four different pathways and a brief description. And I don't know which one of you had the diagram. For whatever reason, I thought there was deflection and then diversion. Now, I might be confusing. I'm not, no, this wasn't the original C J C diagram. Oh, it's on black too. I'm not sure that I've ever seen this one. I just don't remember this one. But there was the one from C J C and for some reason in my simplified brain, there were two pathways. And, and um I need to catch up with four. So I need some help there. Um, so uh, I appreciate that the next work session will be in January. I think that pace of January, then March or so with another quarter, then into the following quarter will be very helpful uh from the standpoint of what we're learning, uh, how the criteria applies. You'll need to guide us in terms of at what points do you see that you can change the application of criteria or change the criteria that you implement to stay within that budget? You know, certainly as I was hearing the answers to the question about why starting small, I wrote down for myself, yes, but if we started too big, we could overwhelm the system that we have just to offer substance use disorder services, you know, recovery services. Um, when you were talking about, gee, I can't even remember the acronym, P C S dash U citations. I imagine, I, I'm uh very simplistic in understanding crime and different categories of crime. I imagine that some individuals are committing crimes like property theft in order to finance their addiction. And I believe someone like that would not be part of that additional pool because they would have been arrested?
They wouldn't qualify.
No, I'm, I'm struggling with the vocabulary. Can you tell who's never been arrested? I'm assuming that if someone is caught stealing someone else's property to finance their addiction, that they would be charged? Is that the right word?
Yes.
With property theft. So I'm assuming that that means they would not be part of that standalone PCSU hook.
Well, the problem is that, as you described it, is they, they are arrested for property theft. And in that arrest, they are also found drugs on them. So now they have two.
Yeah. So they're.
So that doesn't.
Not part of our current limited scheme.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm really very trusting of the fact that there's a list of criteria you're starting here and that you'll continue to right-size. And just tell us when you come back at these various points, where are you uh in those learnings? That'll help me a lot. Um, I, I'm also looking forward to uh a situation where you have more experience and you'll be able to say, here's where we're at. Here's where, based upon the population experience, the community need, as I refer to it, we'd really like to be able to do C D E F instead of A B C, right? We want to do some more, but that means for the next biennium, we would need you, the state, to fund at this level versus this level. And that's what I'm, I have faith that you'll be able to develop that so that the GR team will be able to, well, that will be able to say, yes, that's an ask we want to make. And that the GR team would be able to work with the legislature all the way through ways and means to get the funding that's needed. So, and then you asked about the cadence of receiving email updates. I personally, as one of five, I don't need a weekly update. I'm really looking out for where you have notable information. I want to ensure that if something notable comes up, yes. Don't feel like you have to hold on to that for a later date. But from my standpoint, nothing more frequently than monthly, if that. I mean, at least for me, I'm, I'm pretty happy to wait until that next work session and just gain that experience. But if you think there's something notable in between then, yeah, share that. We want to be on the journey of being able to say, oh, this is going great. Oops. There's some messiness over here and here's what we're learning because we're a learning organization. So. I think we're, we continue to be behind this.
I'm hearing early updates in work session and email updates when there's something notable must.
I think I might be the only one who answered that question. Or what I'm interested in is how, how incrementally the program grows as well. So while I, while I agree with the uh, with once month for notable things, it might be interesting to receive a more frequent chart, just a chart that shows what the, what's happening. a more frequent chart, just a chart that shows what the, what's happening in terms of our numbers, because that's, that's what we're going to be watching. So, and I suspect that my interest will wane after a few months, because we'll be in a plateau type of situation.
And is that something you're expecting weekly? Would that be helpful? Or?
Every other week.
I'm okay with what you said, so just notable information.
It sounds like, you know, how's the track record working out, the inflow, so to speak, that, that three levels that you talked about?
Staff will also just add that in the next quarter, I just appear.
And your voice changed.
Staff will add that in a question at our next quarterly update, just to make sure that we are meeting your communication needs in the program.
I don't understand what the problem with the financing, is the state promised they would fund this, so you know, I believe everything they tell us.
Oh, boy, I love your rose-colored glasses there today. The other thing, look at the time. See how we did on estimating 30 minutes worth of interest? And some, so, yes, we are, we are interested. We're behind you. We're partners in this with you and want you to continue to gain great experience. So probably next time we'll leave 60 minutes. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. Welcome, both of you.
All righty. Next, we're going to change to another side of the House, and it's supportive housing services. So, welcome to the table, team.
I'm going to start.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Commissioners, for the record, my name is Molly Rogers. I'm the Director of Housing Services. We're here to bring further updates with you all on the potential of a ballot measure in the spring to reform the supportive housing services measure. Next slide. So this is actually a new visual of a very familiar cyclical process that we have shared with you before, that charts are budgeting process tied to the information we receive on SHS forecasted revenue. Or this chart, I just want to be clear, I'm using the word, what we call base budget, to describe what we call our ongoing programs and operations for our overall system of care, and not the portion of the budget that comes from our carryover fund balance, because that can really swing from, pretty dramatically, and is really one-time-only funds. As you can see on this chart, it all, everything really starts with the fall forecast that we get from Metro. We use that fall forecast to base our next year's fiscal, next year's fiscal year's budget, base budget. It also gives us insight into our current fiscal year, and how the trends are going related to collections. What we do is we create a base budget in the winter and spring with you all, and that's really based on that previous fall forecast. It also has resulted in a budget adjustment for the current fiscal year to adjust to midstream revisions we need to make, so with that, we can keep up with the additional revenue that they have forecasted for us, and that's actually something that has happened most of these years. And these, and then we have another data point that we track monthly, which is collections, and what we're actually receiving from the SHS measure. So these two pieces, collections and the forecast, will help us determine how much we can put into the community and by when. For the past two years, we have built an initial base budget on that fall forecast, and it's worked well because collections exceeded the forecast. And we are just building out our systems. We are constantly ramping up and building out as we got the funding. This past fiscal year, or program year three, we've had some new, interesting new trends. The partners had more programs and shelters to spend money on, and we got better at aligning our budget adjustments and our spending abilities. So, so well that we actually spent 100% of our budget adjustments, which is pretty unheard of.
Well, not bad compared to 97%.
We strive to improve. Although, we're at our backs.
We're at our backs.
However, the, the other thing that is, was new as we were getting the revenues coming in at the end of this, this, just this past fiscal year, is that we got less than the forecast to the tune of about 6 million. And we started off the new fiscal year, just a couple of months ago, with a budget that was tied to last year's forecast of 115 million dollars for our base budget. So what does this foretell for us? A lot of moving parts. Aaron and I have learned a lot about forecasting and budgeting through this process. Really, a few, few things to highlight for you all. I do believe it means we can't necessarily just rely on the fall forecast anymore for our budget. It will, we will actually come back to you in October with some initial thoughts and what this could mean for our, this current fiscal year, so we're not prepared to talk about that today, as we think through our budget adjustment for FY 24. It does make us rethink our reserve approach a bit. And, and we also need more information. We're also going to get, get another forecast in the next couple of months, that will hopefully give us more insight. So what this means is likely we'll see some reduction this, this fiscal year, but towards an eye of recalibration for next fiscal year. And as Metro continues to explore a reform package, we know that all, it will likely exacerbate these reduction scenarios. So one initial reaction we have gotten from others is why not just use your reserves to plug any holes? Well, there's three different types of reserves and set-asides that we are allowed and required to set aside as part of our IGA with Metro, all with different levels, and I'm at one, and you can see here what we have. But really, the intention, at least for the first two, is to help sort of offset major economic recessionary conditions, or really material reductions in collections, since it is a very volatile income tax for higher-income households. Well, we're not in recession, as far as we know, at this stage in our economy, so this less collections come from forecast is a little bit of a canary of a cold mind that we just need to start thinking through how we do things differently. And I just want to point out, the more we poll from our reserves to address what we think of as actually more of a structural imbalance, the bigger gap we leave ourselves for the next fiscal year, as we are then expected to replenish at the higher reserve. But yeah, so we'll be, we'll have opportunities in the future to kind of rethink some of these assumptions as we adjust to this new reality. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Aaron.
Well, before we move on to the next set of slides, are there any questions on the fiscal outlook, reserves, et cetera?
I do. As silly as it may seem, I, I understand, in Oregon statute, you got to want your budget, except for those governments who have it two-year period, so I understand all that. But in this particular case, why don't we budget out 10 years? And just say, this is what it means if we don't receive those funds? Because it's a 10-year program. There's prescribed amount of dollars that are supposed to be there. But no one's, it's kind of a black hole, just like, I don't want to get down into the other issues that you're going to bring up, but no one really knows what's going to happen. They're going out with a levy potentially. We don't know what that all means. But if you took your revenues and you projected them out, as they've said, and your expenditures, and at any point if somebody triggered a difference, you'd know exactly what that's going to do to your program. That's what you'd articulate back to those in the partner group and say, this is what we're giving up, and here's what it's going to do. But by a one- and two-year, people can't really see the damages, because they're only looking at one year and what you've already done. So I, I guess I don't understand when there's a fixed period of time, fixed amount of revenue supposedly coming in every year, why you can't budget out and show the consequences of not having the status quo.
There's a few, few things we're trying to balance, is we, we can't put out money that we haven't collected yet, and what's kind of wild is we're
I'm, I'm not saying actually spend it, I'm saying forecast.
So we are, we are doing five-year, we, we are doing
So you have more than you're showing us here.
Only in terms of forecast data. Metro has always provided, or tried to provide, a five-year forecast. They hold us accountable on a yearly basis.
They should.
Okay. So while we've had now two or three forecasts, I think it's like
Three.
Three, right?
Yeah.
They've, they've based, the best-known official forecast is the one from November of 2023. And that was based off of, well, at least two years of data, and the best, best-known data from the state, and they've provided that five-year forecast. In addition, we've learned more about what it costs to serve the population and our program. So what you're describing might be a very useful scenario for us to map out. If we continue on with our current system, right, as we're shifting from temporary resources over to permanent shelters, for example, what, what would we be relying upon? That might be a really useful exercise. So I thank you for, for articulating it. We're also having to learn about the flex, what we're going through right now is the flex of collections.
Sure.
Not a, not an official recession, which is where we were really thinking we would have to use reserves. So we're having to put through a scenario of continued flexion points, if I can label them that, and then what about a recession approach of a certain scale? So I really appreciate your comments. We could take the, what it costs to operate our system out for a full 10 years?
We, we have done that for those five, we, we have done, those charts you've seen, that does look at what the system that we're building out across that 10-year level. But we're having, essentially what this means to us, we're having to sort of change our way, we're looking at the budget process on an annual basis now, so that we're not spending money we don't have, and that we're adjusting in real time a little bit more of, we, we had two years of where the forecast was much higher than what we were initially expecting, and now this is the first year it's gone down. So we're having to now think about reduct, tiering of what that means to the program, but we're, we'll, we'll come back to you in October.
As I think was articulated, I'm not saying you, you spend what you don't have, or you act on what you don't have. But what a compelling story, if you can say, here's what we're planning on, and here's what happens if we don't get that.
Yes.
You have a story to tell. Right now, it's just a black hole.
We did start that process, and I can't remember which meeting it was, in, in a work session with you, where we looked at what a 5 million reduction would cost us in current programming and a 10 million reduction, and I think it was sometime in August, but it was in, it was in August, so we can resend that information out. But we have started to look at, this is what we planned, is our annual work plan and what we budgeted for, but if you cut 5 million dollars as part of this ongoing conversation around the ballot measure, a 5 million dollar cut to Washington County equals 100 shelter beds and a number of, or a number of other potential metrics or programs we would have to see reductions in. And we can continue that work as we have more and more numbers, or more and more information.
Okay.
I do have some questions about the numbers, but I'd like to hold them until later. Just because you asked us if we had any question on numbers, so. Keep going.
Okay.
Wait, wait, oh, sorry. Did you present this slide? Yes, the, this is the 32.8, but this relates also to the level of categorization.
Yeah.
And I, I need you to help me or remind me. These are, these are relatively new labels for these different expected set-asides from Metro. And what I've experienced through this whole Metro Regional Housing Stakeholder Advisory Table, and now into these reform conversations, even until recently, this reserve, these categories of reserves were labeled by Metro as excess revenues. They're not excess. They're required set-aside use for specific purposes, so.
That's a really important point the Chair is making, just to reiterate, when Metro has put out numbers related to our fund balances, so it can imply its funds that's sitting there to be, waiting to be spent as we are building out our system. They have included these reserves and set-asides into that total balance, not, that total amount. So it's a little bit, a little bit misleading of what is actually sitting there versus what it's in a carryover fund that's being prepped for one-time-only infrastructure investments.
Yep, the additional revenue that we use to make this better. Yep. Okay, now we're with you. Onward to slide four.
It's a slide four. So as we've, as your board has talked with, talked through this conversation, there's been a lot of trying on what is it we are seeking to solve, and what are the tools in the toolbox, and where are the places that need to happen? And one of the, the questions that has been raised when you listen back to Metro Council conversations is having that regional lens, and that there is a, a need for that broader perspective as we approach this, because people don't just stay in their jurisdictional boundaries. Weird how we built transportation systems to do that. So in talking about what regionalism means, there are some benefits and some constraints to how that mindset can help us move forward, and how the work that we've been doing as three separate counties, but as a region, have, have managed to work out, and we've seen some of those benefits with the regionalism. So we wanted to be really explicit about what we have been able to do and are working towards, but also what we cannot do because of constraints on the system that are not related to the SHS measure, but how we function as a county as part of the operations of the state and as recipients of federal funding. So wanted to lay that out really explicitly, and I think on the benefit side, one of the things that you see most effectively in the community is that we are now able to stand up a Washington County shelter system where if you're homeless in Washington County, you are served in Washington County. You don't have to be boarded over to Multnomah County or Clackamas County. But what we can do is if I am homeless in Washington County, but it turns out my family is all located in Clackamas County, and I'd like to go there as I receive services, we can, through this regional lens, port that voucher over to Clackamas County so that I can move and live closer, and my services are therefore more effective. So that regionalism lens, that ability to communicate between counties and between programs, is a real benefit of the regionalism lens. There are also things that we're working on as three counties related to, oh, and we forgot to spell out what HIMSS stands for, and it's not in my head, but that data tracking system where we can look at things at a more regional level within the constraints of HMIS.
Homeless Management Information System.
Thank you. However, there are also some constraints that people think that they can solve through changes in governance structures that are really constraints in the system itself, particularly around the HMIS. There are things that we have to report up to upper levels of, upper levels of government. Broader levels of government, the federal and the state require data to come at them from a county level. So we cannot just combine all of our regional data, because two things happen. One, we lose half of the physical part of Washington County if we report up only the urban areas, but also we are in violation of what HUD requires of us. Similarly, the state, through Oregon Housing and Community Services Department, also contracts with the Continuum of Care which is Washington County, in, in our case, for funding distribution and needs to be able to monitor. which is Washington County in, in our case, um, for funding distribution and needs to be able to monitor to that level. Because that's where their contracts sit. So we don't just have one contract when it comes to homeless services. Is therefore we cannot regionalize everything because we have to stay in accordance with the contracts with the federal government. So we continue to receive HUD funding as well as with the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department. So we continue to receive state funding. In addition, similarly, um, as service providers in the health sphere, those are county-level programs. And then finally, and I think really importantly reflective of the work that the Housing Services Department has really done is we know what Washington County needs because we're here. And your board can give direction about what Washington County needs because you can pull that information and sort through it with your subject matter experts. Really see what is different about Washington County, what's lacking in Washington County that might be a different need in a Multnomah County with a much larger urban core, um, and a bunch of really small cities. So having those, that local knowledge and local decision-making, um, we can't let regionalism suppress that to say we need to think of the whole region, which oftentimes ends up feeling like we need to think about the urban core. So those are some of the constraints of regionalism. So as we continue down this path of trying to solve, oops, really too far. Talking about governance and where can we find opportunities for improvement? We really looked to what is currently on the books and where does it come from? So really there are three primary areas where governance is structured, two of which are in the ballot measure and one of which is simply through the IGA. So the Tri-County Planning Body, or TCPB, is created in the ballot measure and is referenced in the IGA. And had, is a regional planning body that says, we're gonna set some standards. We're gonna do some work on a regional scope and then have that inform the work of everyone else. Then the ballot measure calls for a community oversight committee and the SHS IGA between the county and Metro outlines more depth. And that's the SHS Oversight Committee. And then there's a third committee that's often overlooked, but it is a currently a staff-based committee called the Executive Committee that is intended to be a, um, in-the-moment problem-solving group. Your board has appointed four of your staff members to that, one from legal, one from housing, one from finance and me because apparently I, um, am useful in those situations as well. So what we realized is really some of the things that we're getting at are the, um, the issues that happen as a result of having these three structures is there needs to be a better clarity around the roles of these three committees. Increase in the visibility of the work so that people are informed. And then the effectiveness of processes, making sure that these committees are able to do the work they were committed to do. So it's starting with the Tri-County Planning Body. If you look at their charter, they have three core missions that they are to accomplish. Strategies for increasing regional supportive housing capacity. Strategies to align systems serving people experiencing homelessness and establishing regional standards and metrics and the systems for collecting the data. This is a 17-member committee. And it's supposed to sit over all of the, the work that's being done. And this is an opportunity where we can see some improvement happen here without throwing the committee out with the bathwater and have it refocus on creating those consistency of policies and practices across the region, which is something we've heard service providers talk about as part of their quest for better governance. And then creating a clear reporting plan to the Metro Council and the county boards on the regional initiatives and investments and requirements, because that's the role of the TCPB. On the SHS Oversight Committee, uh, in reviewing their charter, they really have five main tasks, one of which I think is kind of like checkmark and done. The rest are ongoing work that they are required to do. But the number one thing that they are supposed to be doing pursuant to the ballot measure is as a community representative committee of 15 people, five from each county. They are to be providing independent program oversight on behalf of the Metro Council. That's in their foundational documents. Part of that is evaluating the local implementation plans that each county created. And then reviewing and accepting annual reports for consistency with those local implementation plans. Monitoring financial program administration and then providing annual reports and presentations to both the Metro Council and to all three county boards. You have had these, um, reports back to you in your board meetings. So again, there are opportunities for improvement without throwing out this requirement from the ballot measure and the IGA and really creating clearer opportunities for getting information from the Oversight Committee to the Metro Council, to the counties and to the community, because this is the place where issues should be raised, concerns should be addressed and questions about if our programming is meeting the expectations that we set for ourselves is being accomplished through our plans and through our financial administration. The third committee is just in the IGA, and if the IGA were to be opened up for renegotiation, it could be changed without a ballot measure. Currently, the SHS Executive Committee pursuant to the IGA is tasked with program implementation improvements among the four jurisdictional partners because the four entities that sit on this executive committee are four staff from Metro, four staff from Washington County, four staff from Multnomah County and four staff from Clackamas County. And then we are supposed to convene as a problem-solving body before we have to enter into the mediation called for under the IGA. So if there are issues coming up that need a solution, the executive committee was intentionally put in place and negotiated as part of the IGA as the table to, to, um, bring those to light. One of the things that we've talked about is, is this committee being used effectively? And I think, um, from my assessment, have never been brought into a meeting because we haven't had one in quite some time. Yes, it could be. One opportunity which would require, uh, changes to the IGA to reform the executive committee would be to have it be a place where, um, the four jurisdictional elected officials have a conversation instead of asking, um, for staff to do that fine dance going between. So that's one thought process that we had about how we can explore how to address those issues we believe are being called for when they talk about restructuring government. And apparently that was our last slide and we didn't write any question slides. So with that, I turn it back to your board to find out what further information needs you have and what further conversation you would like to have that Chair Harrington can bring back into these conversations with her peers.
I think on that second question, uh, just a reminder context that, uh, the three county chairs have asked Council President Peterson for another meeting of the four of us, uh, to commence no sooner than Thursday, the 26th. Since both I will be away. Commissioner Vega Peterson will be away for a few days and Commissioner, uh, Chair Smith has her, uh, campaign as well. But we do need to get back together and I haven't heard the status of that yet. So, um, what further information do you need to understand the impact of proposals? Our staff is planning on coming back to us in October. And I think that's like October 15th or so. So only a couple weeks away, really? And then, uh, is there any other direction you want to provide for me?
What would be, from my standpoint, what would be helpful is, there's no questions I have on your slides. I mean, you're, you talk about what is and then your opportunities for improvement, but I'm not clear in my own mind what Metro is really posing in their process, and you may not know that either. But it, it would be helpful if, if, uh, you're negotiating with people, you're trying to come to terms with people, if you kind of understand where their positions are, what they think needs to be changed and what the status quo is. I'm not understanding where those failure to communicate points are.
I think in having listened back to the Metro Council's conversations in July and the very first week of August before they went on their August recess, there was conversation that the council had amongst itself in a work session about should they reformat the governance committees completely? And that they did not reach any sort of explicit proposal. They'd kicked the tires around what they were thinking. They also talked about setting, um, metrics and had a conversation with staff about what metrics look like through Oregon Housing and Community Services, what metrics look like for HUD programming. Houston's and a few others. So they have not stated anywhere in, in the public what it is explicitly that they would like to see changed and merely had a conversation of what could be without, it appears, reaching any consensus within those meetings. And then turned it over to Council President Peterson to talk to the three chairs. And from there, that, that's as much insight as I have to provide in the, in the public space.
Are we negotiating against ourselves then by even saying much until they have a proposal?
Do you want their answer or my?
I'd love both. I'd love both.
I, I think in trying to recognize that Metro's not the only player in this conversation. If we can make process changes without undoing the work that is not negotiating in our, against our interests, but standing firm on our IGA commitments and the commitments made in the ballot measure. I think if we do anything to suggest less than what those call for is negotiating against ourselves and merely operating under the presumption that if we can clarify what data goes in and out and how it is shared publicly, that is actually just a benefit across the board. It's what we practice here in Washington County. It's why your board receives quarterly updates. But we're, um, I don't think we'd be negotiating against ourselves unless we are saying this is our proposal. We're just saying here's some room for improvements within the structures without redoing the structures.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I stand by everything that she said. One of the things that I am very proud of, not only with our staff, but especially for the culture that this board has displayed, is we're very transparent, uh, on different topics across our portfolio set. And that includes here today. So we're doing what comes more naturally to us. So.
So just, this was, this is interesting because as I started into this, uh, in advance, I thought, okay, this is about money and budgeting for future monies and then the current structure. And then some, some proposed modifications, I guess, remembering I'm going back to reading the, um, CO's recommendations. So I'm trying to pull all this stuff together and say, where exactly are we going with the exception of somebody is throwing the baby out with the bathwater at this deal and it's kind of starting over again. But so to Roy's point, current financing or forecasting 10 years, all of that, that's all well and good with the exception of we'd have to plug into that what the, what do we have, three factors that they're tossing out now, changing the rate, changing the
Indexing.
Indexing, yeah, and.
Rebasing.
Right.
Increasing the.
So we've got three factors that are, uh, by the chart we've been given are going to significantly impact the money that we're going to get. And then the whole structure has potential for changing. So I don't know how the heck we forecast on any of that, but you know, it's up to you guys. So I'm going to go back to the easy part. I'm going to ask two questions real quick. First of all, I don't understand what porting local vouchers means. And the second thing is, are we precluded? Let's just say that we're going to say status quo in the financial projections. Are we precluded from saying there could be a 20% flex in this? So we're going to budget 80%. I noticed that we budgeted, projected was 115 million in 2024, 25. We budgeted 115 million, but historically we should have known better, actually. Because there is a lot of flex in this. But anyway, can we take 20% and park it and say, this is a contingencies?
There's, there's, it's pretty well established in the IGA what the level of reserves we can have. There's a partner stabilization reserve, which they say the minimum is 10%, but we could go up to 15. That's something we, we have been doing 10%, something we will be looking at increasing going forward. There's a contingency which is more for emergencies, um, in addition to the stabilization reserve. And that is, cannot exceed 5% of the, uh, budgeted program funds in any case. We can't do more than five, we're doing five. Um, and then there's the set aside of the, um, TCPB, which is a, a fund balance that keeps growing because we haven't been able to move forward on some of the regional activities. So that, we don't want necessarily that one to grow. But we want, um, I think that is a conversation we need to have with Metro. Is, as we are, we're, we're now experiencing the full volatility in a downward way. And we hadn't had to do that before. So it does mean us thinking about our budgeting differently, perhaps more conservatively, and us then thinking about what's an okay amount of, what's our budget to that forecast ratio since we were plugging one to the other. I think the challenge we all face ourselves is the more that we had funds unspent, the more the media and other, you know, the meat, the public perceived us as not being as responsive. So we have to change that narrative and the communication strategy. And that's why we're going to keep reporting on our fund balances minus our reserves and our, our contingencies so that it's more clear what funds are there waiting for us to be invested into the system. Your previous question. Oh, porting. Yeah, so that's, so let's just say porting is a, is actually more of a housing authority term that we use when we have vouchers. And it's typically when someone, uh, receives, in this case, it would say an ARLA voucher. In Washington County, they're experiencing homelessness. They, um, got into some kind of housing situation here, but they decided they would rather move to Clackamas County. We have an arrangement with the other housing authorities and the other, our, our, our implementing, um, agencies that we will accept that, um, household to get the same amount of.
So they don't have to start the process over.
Exactly, it's, it's like a transfer.
Right, okay. So one, uh, one, just quick comment, our 115 million dollar budget that we put, that we budgeted approved this year, knowing what we know now, we're going to spend it all? Are we required to spend it all?
We are not required to spend it all. We want to have good budget practices and, um, we will kind of revisit that. But that's really the intent for our October 15th work session with you all to cut, to think through some guiding principles as we have those, start having conversations with our community partners and what it can mean to the various programs and intervention strategies. There's a number of programs we set up as temporary, you know, waiting, um, to be, waiting for our permanent shelters to be built out and they're temporarily, uh, living somewhere else. So those might, you know, accelerate a bit. We don't really know fully yet, um, but we need to start having, um, a conversation with you. And we're having a conversation with our advisory body, our, um, Solutions Council to kind of help guide us through what that could all mean to those community partners.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, in addition to that, we are definitely doing more scenario, um, analyses, um, that looks at not just our five and 10 million dollar reduction packages, but what could it mean if it goes deeper? Based on now what we potentially could see as worst-case and best-case scenario. So we're going to do the full gamut.
You're looking at me and in response, what, and he knows from his, his accounting days, it sounds complicated. Forecasting is like hydraulics, all you're doing is changing the knobs. It, we do it all the time and it's, it's, uh, it's, you're simply putting the parameters and you say, well, if I make this change, what does that mean? If I make this change? It's very common, it's complex.
I don't have any questions, thank you. I'm still processing a lot of information. I think the, the interesting part is the way that, uh, for me, is the way that reserves are presented, something that is.
Yeah, usually when you have reserves, like you say, you're being rooted.
Yeah.
Why is, you're not spending all your money, what's the problem?
Yep.
By the way, we're going to change the budget too.
Commissioner Feig.
Hi, thank you, Chair, thank you.
Hi, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Molly and Erin. I'm looking forward to the October presentation and I would really appreciate if we could sort of maybe loosely, so we don't get ahead of the negotiation of whatever process that's happening behind. Just to understand a bit more of what is our positioning with this? Like, how do we position Washington County that we can all speak up? And I'm hesitant because I don't want to break any rules to even have an opinion tonight. But this is very complex and I think, Chair, I appreciate everything you're doing to give us all the information to just reiterate, like come back with a recommendation of like, this is where we draw the line. And it seems like everything is
If I, if I could just lean into this opportunity. Our position hasn't changed, but time has passed. So it's a really good time to remind ourselves of that. So our position has been that we've been building a system and all new system. Today, we now have the addition of the regionalism slide and the benefits of what we've been doing. We haven't, we haven't had that nice crisp summary written down this way. So we now have it so we can evangelize that as additional system build out capacities that we didn't have before. So we've been building a system. It's been making a positive impact in lives. And the other positional statement is if there are any changes under consideration, we want to do so as partners. And we're still working out what's needed to have a productive partnership. It's still a little mysterious to me. Is that helpful?
That's very helpful.
And absolutely. The more that's learned along the way, you will continue to be on the journey. Because I don't know how else to do it.
Well, Chair, Molly, Erin, you have been before us multiple times. You've done a great job of keeping us on this journey and keeping us aware of what's coming as best you can. And so I appreciate very much your commitment to keeping us informed. And Chair, that goes with you too. I know you're leading with the other chairs. So thank you.
I do have a question. I'm sorry. You mentioned the regional and the table there. Are those, are those benefits and constraints? That's to our lens, correct?
Yes.
Not necessarily, or is it hell, are those same benefits and constraints held by the other two counties?
We have not had any formal discussion with the other two counties specific to these concepts and these slides, but the other two counties have to adhere to the same HUD rules, same state rules.
And this, the, this information is a result of their close working together. So
And I can't see where there'd be any differences, but I thought I would just clarify.
Yeah, and I think even the benefits go beyond just between the three counties, but to the system as a whole and our service providers, and particularly the first benefit of consistency of policy and procedures in the programming. But as a place where, as we continue down this path with this regional lens, that is helpful because often our community-based organizations are not merely in Washington County. They are in one, two, or three of the counties and being able to say, I can do this here, so I can do it anywhere. It just adds to the capacity across the region. And I think the data tracking conversations that are a work in progress at the end of the day will also very clearly be a bigger benefit to the, to the region as a whole and in how we talk about the success that we have been very clear on and how we've been able to use these funds effectively in our community.
And so I can take away that that really is a county look
Yes.
at the benefits and the constraints.
And possibly even cursory, because if we thought harder, we could come up with more.
So I have a couple of needs for further understanding. I appreciated slide number two, which is the diagram. So when you talk about the budget, does the budget include the reserve components? Or is it just the program outflows?
The reserves, I believe, are budgeted as part of a contingency line item.
So they're within the budget?
Your question was, is it in 115 or is it not?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yep. I was actually working on just year three.
Yeah. So those reserves are actually budgeted as part of our carry forward fund balance. So not the 115 up there. So wait.
So in the 2324 budget, the 71 million base does not include the carryover money. That's in a, is that what you're saying? So 71 million is the operational base.
That's the base budget, operation budget.
Yeah, we were projected to read 115. That's why we budgeted 115. But you're right.
It's, well, the Chair's working.
30 million is not in there.
No, what, 115 applies to year four.
Right.
Correct.
Got it. So I was just looking at year three because I thought the information was in the final quarter of year three that collections were lower
Yep.
to the tune of 6% overall, 6.5 million for our distribution. So what I'm trying to do that is you had the budgeted amount that was going out the door for services. So the 103 in realized revenue. So I'm trying to figure out if we have to go back and fill that $6 million hole out of the reserves or given that it says 103 million in realized revenue, that means that that $6 million is covered. See my problem?
Yeah, it is confusing because there's so many different moving parts. But essentially, we collected 103, but we budgeted and we spent 96. So we don't have to fill, have to go back and fill it out of reserves. No. But it does Okay.
Reduction is a, is a canary in the coal mine of what could we, we could experience this fiscal year because we said it, we went bold.
Yeah.
Set it at 115.
So my real need centers on a couple of different things. One is that the finance documents from Metro, both the September 3rd one, but then the November. There's the November one and the March one. The March 2024 one is two pages. And on page two, underneath the chart, there's two paragraphs. And in the second paragraph, it talks about how the tax collections are dynamic and variable from this year's forecast could approach 50 million. That means the swing could be plus or minus 50 million. So 30% of 50 million. I did the math.
50.
Yeah.
You don't have to do the calculator. We have a calculator.
So then I went to the reserve slide. Thank you very much. And when you have 17.3, which if I heard you right, so please verify, that's the, applying the 10%? Okay, so we're still looking at what it would be. So the 6% is already covered. But should, you know, what this is telling us is we have to live with the possibility that there's a $50 million swing. And lucky for us, that $15 million, the fifth, of the 50 million, 15 is us and the 10% would cover that for one year.
Yes, but, yes, and then we had, we start at an even bigger deficit.
Because we have to restore it. Yes, yes.
Doesn't solve, yeah.
Oh, but at least I understand the numbers. So where I'm really coming from is, now keep in mind, my favorite magazine is Bloomberg Business Week, which is now a monthly. So I grew up with it. All these decades later, I still gobble it up. And I lived through the tech bubble in 2000, 2001. So there was a tech bubble recession. Then there was the mother of all recessions I don't ever want to live through in my lifetime, the Great Recession. And then we had the COVID pandemic economic shock. Because of all the weirdness with fiscal policy, I haven't heard the word recession applied to that. It's just been fundamentally weird. But we know we had a loss of employment and therefore that was the third case of income tax variability here in Oregon. So being the scenario thinker that I am, I have I hung out a lot with Dennis He, the former economist at Metro, okay? And now there's Josh Harwood. And I have thus far lapped up as much information and explanation as he's willing to give me. So what I am having a difficult time with is, come on. In the last 25 years, we have these three data points of economic bad news. We can quantify those and what happens to Oregon income tax levels. So apply it to this 1% income tax source. It's a, it's an art, okay? But it tells us something. So I, there is a part of me that wishes I had copious amounts of time to go dig into that data to paint three scenario pictures. So I think that's what I'm longing for. The metro economist team or the three county plus metro economist team to quantify for us. So that we have more than just, well, I don't even remember what the total big number is for the total tax to understand how 50 million fits in. So that's just a lot of information. I just needed to get it out. I don't know what to do with it yet. Then I wanted, pardon me?
Do more sensitivity.
Okay, that's a good way to put it. Big thank you for slide number four. The benefits and constraints of regionalism. I love this slide. Love the information that's there. Thank you very much. Really thrilled to see it. I also want to give a shout out to all that our community development team have taught me over the years. First, under Jenny Proctor's leadership and now Shannon Wilson and everything that goes into defining a new consolidated plan. That has helped me understand both the countywide system, the federal resources, and more about the continuum of care and having a countywide system addressing poverty and low income variability. So just wanted to share that. Thank you very much. Onward, ho we go. Thank you. October 15th. We'll see you then. Okey dokey. Board and Leadership Communication Time and Formal Agenda Item Check-In. Based upon time, we're 45 minutes behind. I would suggest that we do a quick check-in on tonight's formal agenda first. So if there's anything staff needs to hunt down for us, they have time to do so. So we have the 16 items on the consent agenda. Then we have a couple of things under Boards and Commissions. We have a proclamation on World Environment Health Day. One straightforward public hearing on SDL number one. Then an action item for the large project match, that new program under MISTIT. Do we have any questions or comments? I think I finally understand the West Slope Library. So thank you for the confirmation there. Okay, good news. We're all set on that. We have a draft letter. I want to make sure we get that taken care of as well. And don't you know, I already managed to find it. This place and found all in the same time. Thank you very much, Commissioner Willie, for the modifications on the draft versus what I initially saw just yesterday afternoon.
Thank you. I appreciate the quick response.
I'm, I'm thumbs up. Okay. Somebody's going to apply digital signatures. Oh, thank you, Meta. There you are. Appreciate it. Okay, now, Board Communication?
Can we, considering that we have an executive session scheduled for four o'clock and I'm sure is that the ready to do that? I'd prefer we skip over Board Communication unless there's something really critical and take a break. Or we could do it later.
Yeah, yeah, we could see how. So 15 minute break and then
With one exception. How about clean water?
I am, yeah.
They may not want to come back.
Yeah.
Yeah, but misery loves company.
No, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I just really wanted to say thank you to Washington County's Emergency Preparedness Team. The fair was fabulous and I know our employees enjoyed it and getting them prepared for what they need to do for their families at home helps them be ready for work under the emergency. So thank you to Washington County. This Thursday, we have Seawax Annual Dinner and Paddle on the River with the Board. I know Jerry can't attend, but everyone else is planning to be there, so.
I'm doing the dinner part. I'm not doing the on the water part. Amis, she's our water person.
And I know Seawak looks forward to it every year. So thank you.
Great. Okay, so 405 will convene as under executive session. And if I could, I just have a question. We are going to do Leadership Update, correct? Yes. We haven't skipped it altogether. No.
I think that's something
Well, I do, in case we can do it tonight. Okay, I just want to make sure that we're all clear about the IMPACT meeting coming up on the 25th. And I, so why don't we take a few more minutes then and we can take care of that?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
I'd appreciate just letting you know what happened at the last meeting and moving forward. We met on September 11th. We discussed the recommendation. We had only one comment on the one person testifying, that was Kelly Ritz, which that was a little unusual. Was surprised about that. There appears to be general support for the UGB expansion among the IMPACT members. There was a lot of discussion around potential affordable housing and without funding. Also similar concerns about the density conditions. There was, like I said, there was a lot of discussion around making sure the funding was available for housing. The, the other piece I just wanted to mention is Mayor Joe Buck made a really, I think a really poignant, if you will, comment about the fact that Metro needs to understand the degree of boldness and frankly bravery that it takes for cities to move forward with these types of concept plans because they're putting their political careers on the line in many ways. We've seen it across Washington County. So I appreciated Mayor Buck's
So I, I appreciated Mayor Buck's comments there and I, I believe that Mayor Rosner did as well. The other piece that I want you to know just on a timeline basis is I've been working with Stephen and with Jessica, just making sure we're, you know, we, we understand all the process steps. MTEC is going to be asked to make recommendations to MPAC by the 18th of their, their meetings tomorrow, which means that we'll have about a week to look at their recommendations before we go to the actual vote on the 25th. And then the Metro Council is going to hold a public hearing on the 26th after the MPAC recommendations come forward. And then they have the first ordinance reading on November 21st. Second reading will be on December 5th. I just wanted to get that out there so everybody understands, you know, I'm, I'm concerned and focused on MPAC. We still, as a commission, obviously have the opportunity to put forward any testimony that we might want to or letters in the, in the event that we have different information. So that's, I just wanted to update you there. Thank you.
Alrighty, so the plan is we'll, I'll ask for a motion, we'll do it, we'll take a break for 15 minutes and then convene here at 10 past. So could I get a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to ORS 192.660 sub 2 sub F for the purposes of reviewing exempt records or discussing exempt records?
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, five to zero. We'll be back here in executive session at 4:10.